Okay, well, we have a quorum, so I think we should start. We're going to call this meeting to order of the Concord Select Board on November 22nd, 2021. It is 6:31 PM. We're via Zoom, so we need a roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates. I believe she's not present yet.
Not yet.
Mr. Dane.
You are on mute.
You're still on mute, Mr. Dane. Okay, you're gonna need to fix, you have the, you have the voice filter again, you're gonna have to reconnect. Okay. Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
Okay, thank you. We will now go on to the consent agenda.
So move to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of August 16th, 2021. The executive session minutes of August 16th, 2021, not to be released at this time. September 13th, 2021, September 13th, executive session number one and number two, not to be released at this time. September 20th, 2021, October 4th, 2021, executive session not to be released at this time. October 18th, 2021, as well as a gift acceptance from, from the Concord Land Conservation Trust, a gift of $25,000 for the acquisition of the Emerson Land Conservation restriction.
Oh, may I just point out that on the October 18th, 2021 meetings minutes, there is, on the last vote, which was before we went into executive session, it doesn't register not to return to open session. But other than that, I found it was fine.
Okay, so move to approve the consent agenda plus the October 18th, 2021 minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
I with a thank you to Concord Land Conservation Trust for their generous gift.
And Ms. Bates, we are voting on the consent agenda with the minutes of 28, October 18th, 2021 amended to say not to return to open session when we move to executive session. So do you approve of those? Okay, you're on mute, by the way.
Yes, I approve.
Okay, Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. And before we go on, I would like to ask, who, now that Jeremy has left us and we will miss him, who is taking minutes tonight? Stephen, do you know?
I think we'll have somebody, we have a temporary employee that's working in the finance department who will review the recording and do minutes. But I would, I would recommend that the clerk at least make sure to take the votes, you know, the motions, the seconds and vote outcomes, just in case something happens with the recordings.
Okay, will do.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and we will move on to the town manager's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So you have the printed report in the packet. I will say, it was good news on the COVID dashboard and the information I received last week. And really excellent results for the vaccination clinics that they did for the schools. I did receive just late this afternoon some updated numbers that seemed to be, that seemed to show an uptick in cases, but I don't have information from the health director to put those in context yet. As soon as I do, I'll let the board know, but just, we were heading into the holidays, and I think the reminder is for people to just take the necessary precautions to protect your, you know, your, the health of you and your families. And speaking of precautions, I was asked by the chief of police to remind Concord residents to lock your vehicles at night. We've had some break-ins of vehicles on last, I mean, it's, it's been happening on an ongoing basis, but I think there was a total of five last night. And none of the cars were locked, so just a reminder before you go in to just lock your car. And then I did want to announce for the community that the board and I have reached an agreement to provide for my resignation, which will be effective on December 31st, and I expect that we'll be issuing a statement in the coming days.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. And thank you for serving the town of Concord since August of 2019. We have indeed reached an agreement, the board and the town manager, on our terms of separation, and we will be issuing a joint public statement in the coming days. We wish you, Stephen, the best in all of your future endeavors. Thank you. I also have a few other announcements. Actually, my first one is, I would like to ask the board, as we discussed last meeting, whether you want to resume meeting live starting next meeting, which is December 6th. I do actually recommend that we try a live meeting for a few reasons. One is, we want to test out the big hearing room at the townhouse again in preparation for the public hearing on December 16th, which will be a hybrid meeting, and it would be great to have another test for December 16th. Is that with all the board members, if we try to meet live again on December the 6th? Or does anyone have a problem with that? Okay, see none, we will try that, see how it goes. Also, we are going to cancel the December 13th focused meeting. We have been very active and we have been getting an awful lot done. And some of us are getting burned out, so we are going to hold that date in case we have an emergency or something unforeseen comes up, but going to for now cancel that focus meeting. And we have had four successful focus meetings this year, and we are tentatively planning for the January focus meeting that will be on the topic of 2229 Main Street. That will be on January the 10th. And as I said before, we've been busily preparing for the public hearing December 16th at 7:00 PM. This will be a hybrid meeting in preparation for the special town meeting coming up in January, January 20th. Select Board members are highly encouraged to attend live at the town hall at 7:00 PM. Okay, that is it for my remarks, and.
Terry, just to clarify, so while you've canceled the focus part of the meeting for December 13th, right now, have you canceled the select board meeting in general for the 13th?
Yes, I, I am hope, I, right now, we're going to cancel it. But I asked the board members just in case to hold it open in case something comes up. We have been adding a lot of extra meetings, and I hope we don't have to add another extra meeting, but we will take it off the calendar for now.
And we do meet December 16th that week, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So our meetings in December are the 6th, which is a joint meeting, part of it with the school committee to finish up the capital plan, and December 20th, and the public hearing on December 16th. I see Senator Barrett has joined us, and we have a very busy meeting tonight. I'm going to ask Senator Barrett and everyone tonight to try and be brief. Thank you so much for joining us, Senator Barrett. And we have two big topics to go over, just things in general that you might want to give us an update on, and the six home rule petitions that we're following. We'd like to get an update on those.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Barrett. Very pleased to join you and the board and the residents of the town. I don't have too many general comments to make. I'll, I'll make mention of items that I believe the board is well aware of with respect to developments at both the state and fed. There are three tranches funds coming our way courtesy of the feds, although they'll make pit stops at the state level before reaching Concord. First of all, as you all know, we have the original economic recovery monies, some of which have found their way to the town, and I'm now referring, referring matters that are probably six months old. What we've got more recently are the so-called ARPA monies, the American Recovery Act. These are appropriations which should be making their way to municipal governments. But, but candidly, should have been to you already, the House and the Senate have reviewed recommendations of the governor and taken a lot of public testimony on American Recovery appropriations, but did not come to agreement, I regret, late last week, as we had all expected them to do. So there's going to be some, my own guess is, while, while there will be some delay, that in an informal session sometime over the course of the next 30 days, ARPA monies will be conference successfully, the House version, the Senate version reconciled. The governor will sign the resulting compromise. And a second wave of money after that initial wave I mentioned a moment ago will be on its way to municipal government. A lot of it has to do, as you all probably know, with adaptation monies for climate and infrastructure monies more broadly, so lots of appropriations for roads and bridges. And I, I believe that some American Recovery Plan Act money has also gone directly to town coffers from, from the feds. The third wave is the money that was approved by the US Congress also last week, and this is money that includes two very large buckets and some small ones. The two large buckets passed the US House but not let yet the US Senate involves an enormous tranche of taxpayer money for early childhood education and for childcare workers. And the second big bucket approved by the US House will have to do not with climate adaptation. That's round two. But climate mitigation, this is going to be money to help homeowners put solar panels on roofs. Additional monies to help folks electrify bill heating or their natural gas heating systems. A whole bunch of appropriations, in other words, to bring emissions down and not merely to adapt to the emissions that we've already brought upon ourselves as a world. So it's unclear if the US Senate is going to approve that third wave, but it is quite likely that it will, although in somewhat diminished form. Long and the short of it is that we're going to see then three waves of available to Concordians. Money that arrived about six months ago, money that's currently being conference between the Massachusetts House and Senate, and that ideally will be on your way in the next third. And money not yet approved by the US Senate, but focused on this mitigation issue, this reduction of emissions issue that I mentioned, and on childcare. So temporarily, for about three or four years, there's going to be a significant amount of assistance going to homeowners individually and to town and state governments. After that, I expect the well to run dry again. I don't think this is going to be a permanent feature of the federal or state landscape. So to that extent, we're probably looking at finances that are going to see a very significant bump up, but one that won't last forever. We do have six home rule bills to discuss too, but I wanted to give you a sense of the larger appropriations picture before we got into those details. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Senator. Why don't we see if the board has any questions on those items first? Then we will continue. We will have a few minutes at the end for questions from the public, and I already have one, one person who is going to be asking a question. Any board members have questions on what Senator Barrett has covered so far? Okay, let's continue with the home rule petitions.
Well, there, by my count, there are six of them. Each of them occupies a different posture. I'd be happy to very briefly go over each of the six. Four originated as House bills, right? So they were initially submitted by State Representative Tammy Gouvea. Two were initially submitted by me. This matters, has to get one of these bills through the branch of origin before they can migrate over to the second branch, so it matters where you start. Four of these started in the House, two in the Senate. One of the two Senate bills would establish a real estate transfer fee that the town would retain in order to aid the construction of affordable housing, probably to support some rents as well in current, if, low-income housing. And the situation here is somewhat tricky. I'm the primary sponsor of this Senate bill originating in Concord as a home rule petition. It did have a hearing before the Revenue Committee in late, I. The complicating factor here is that no town in Massachusetts in recent years has received approval of a home rule bill seeking to do this. Concord is, is part of, to its credit, I think, is part of a wave of communities attempting this. Somerville was their first. Somerville's move, bill hasn't moved out of the Committee on Revenue, and neither has Concord's. The problem is that developers don't want to see, they say, a town-by-town activity on this front, which effectively would create a a checkerboard system of public policy with respect to exactions of this kind. So we can take them at their word. As a consequence, I am a sponsor in the Senate of a piece of legislation that would make these same transfer fees legal statewide, authorizing them for every town in Massachusetts. This should address the real estate developers' objections about checkerboarding, but still give us a pot of money that wouldn't require a home bill, bill to move on a municipality by municipality basis. Now that statewide legislation moved as well, we're relatively in this two-year session. Most of the activity in these two years always takes place in the even-numbered year, in the odd-numbered years, the last six months effectively were of, of legislating, so there is hope for the statewide piece of legislation, although I think the fight is going to be difficult. There is less hope for Somerville, for Concord, and for others who would seek to do the same thing on a town-specific basis. The other, the other Senate bill that I want to mention would create a building permit surcharge, also, I believe, for the purposes of helping with affordable housing. I think the prospects for this are better. This bill actually passed the Senate in the last session. It was a Senate bill two years ago as well. So I got it through, it did not make House, unfortunately. Prospects are pretty decent, I think, for our getting this through the Senate again. The name of the game for me then becomes getting it early enough through my branch, earlier than I suspect we were, we got it through two years ago, so that Representative Gouvea has time to work the bill through the House side. So I don't want to suggest that because of our success of two years ago, we're going to see it succeed again. Timing is everything in this business. This bill at the moment is before the Joint Housing Committee, that, that is a problem. It has to get out of a joint committee before it can make it over to the Senate, so this time around, I don't have it yet in a posture where I can move for early adoption. It needs to go out of the joint committee. The reporting deadline for bills in Massachusetts every two years is what they call a joint rule 10-day. We have a rule that requires that all bills have to be reported by a date certain. It lands, happens, it falls in February of next year. It falls in February every two years. So a lot of bills will come out of the gates in January and February of next year. I need this bill to, once again, as it did two years ago, come over to the Senate. I then need to be able to move it quickly, get it over to the House so that Representative Gouvea can work on it with time sufficient for her to do her thing. So in short, two Senate bills out of the six home rule bills. The first one probably needs a statewide piece of legislation. The second one, I ought to be able to get through the Senate once more, but I need, it needs to move out of the housing committee sooner rather than later, and that probably means, given that we're entering Thanksgiving week, it probably means next January, so I'm nervous about it. Let me talk about the four House bills. There's one that has to do with liquor licenses for the sale of wines, additional liquor license, I should say, for the town. Both Representative Gouvea and I are sponsoring this, and this one I'm hopeful about. This one is already in it. It meaning it's passed the House, and I think we can hope to move the additional liquor license bill. In fact, it's already progressed in the Senate. So mark that bill as the first of the three I've referenced, whose prospects are good. Another House bill would make permanent a senior means tested exemption to the property tax. You, I think you all are familiar with this bill. Unfortunately, that is still before a joint committee, the Committee on Revenue. I can't predict, I'm not on the committee myself. When the joint will act, I can only point out that there is a deadline in February for all bills to get out of their respective committees with either a ought to pass or an ought not to pass. I am a co-sponsor of this one and obviously hope that it will pass. But well, I want to mention a fifth bill that's giving 17-year-olds the right to vote in municipal elections. I support this concept. It is not law anywhere in Massachusetts that we can find, but a number of municipalities, it, it was, it was a temporary, right? A number of municipalities seek to make it permanent, as Concord does. It, it's a little like, a bit like the real estate transfer fee. A number of bills involving different towns and cities giving 17-year-olds the right to vote in municipal elections are being held, in this case, by the election law hearing, but the committee seems to be holding. My hope is that you'll see again statewide legislation approving the right of 17-year-olds to vote at local option. If approved by a local town meeting, in the municipal, approval is received. So I'd like to see statewide rules of the road set in that respect. I support this idea myself. I, its prospects to move out of election laws quickly, I can't honestly give much insight into. Which brings us to the sixth bill, and, and here, this is the one bill of the six that I do not support. I am not a co-sponsor of it. It authorizes the enforced local regulations restricting new fossil fuel infrastructure in town. So you might recall that the climate bill passed after an initial gubernatorial veto and made law this past June, is one that I played a significant role in writing. I want to see statewide reforms that would permit every municipality, local option, effectively to reduce new natural gas hookups and that put into effect net zero energy code. To make that happen statewide, our, our odds are pretty good. So I'm optimistic that we're going to get a statewide solution to something that Concord has taken aim at, says as Brookline Arlington. I don't support a town-by-town solution here because I do want a statewide solution, and I think it's achievable. The deadlines was something like this. We wrote into the Climate Act requirement that there be a local option, net zero stretch energy code designed by the State Department of Energy Resources, and made available to municipalities by the end of 2022. I have been told that a draft document, a straw proposal to do exactly that is going to be available within the next month. Five public hearings then have to be held. Concordians who believe that Concord should be able to deal with natural gas and new construction and gut rehabs will, would be well advised to turn out of these public hearings. We need a very large outpouring of municipal officials saying, this is something we want to do on our own. In fact, Concord could say, as could Lexington, we have a home rule bill to do exactly this. I can promise you that the home rule bill isn't going to be ditched. I want Concord's and Lexington's and Arlington's bill standing by in case the Baker administration disappoints us on a statewide basis. I believe that they will not. I think they're already hearing enough from municipal activists and from people like me, so that they will come forward with a statewide regiment, which again ensures standardization, something that is important to the developer community, but at a very exacting level in terms of reducing carbon emissions. So net zero for new construction needn't mean no natural gas hookups for that construction, but in many cases will mean precisely that. You could, in theory, right, construct a very energy-efficient house so able to hold on to every bit of energy that it needs to stay warm, that, that you wouldn't need to cut off all natural gas hookups. You might offset the emissions attributable to the natural gas coming into such a tight dwelling with solar panels on the roof. You could get to net zero as a consequence with some natural gas, but as a practical matter, especially for retrofits, gut rehabs, you're going to need to use heat pumps instead of natural gas, which is what Concord is interested in. So what I'm watching for, just to be candid with you, and what I hope that people in town will watch for, is a statewide net zero building code, which allows Concord to say, you know what? In this new construction, we can't offset a little gas with solar panels for whatever reason. In that project instead, we need to not have a fossil fuel hookup at the outset. I need Concord to have the freedom to make that choice on its own. If the, I do know that the Baker administration is getting a lot of pressure from developers who, for whom the idea of net zero is toxic. Their opposition to this formulation, either by Concord or by the entire prompted Governor Baker to veto, to veto the bill originally. We won that battle. We preserved the net zero language. In fact, we, we did strengthen it. Now the state has no options but to help us out in this respect, but we do need that straw proposal to drop so that we can all get a look at it. Then Concord officials need to show up at these five public hearings that have yet to be scheduled to make sure that Concord has the local options it needs. I'm consciously optimistic that everything is going to go well. My own feeling about the home rule bill, though, is that I, while I don't want to see it defeated, I do want to see it, as I say, stand by, and I promise you that if the Baker administration disappoints us, Concord's bill and Lexington's and a number of others will, will move, and we'll then have a pattern that developers say they dislike. I hope it'll come back. That's the six.
Thank you so much for that summary of, of all of those pieces of what we hope will turn into legislation. So questions from the board or comments? Matt?
Yeah, so Senator Barrett, a question for you is, other than the energy bill, which you've outlined very clearly, what you'd like to see us do? What can we do as a town to help the passage of the other initiatives? And I guess I'm especially looking at the one And I guess I'm especially looking at the one for the building permit surcharge, because it sounds like it's the one with maybe the highest probability among the ones that from a policy perspective, we really need to have happen. I should say, the other one that is really critical right now, because we're already doing workarounds, is the tax fairness proposal. Where, you know, we had a program in place, it expired, and we need it to become permanent. We do have a number of residents that depend upon that program. As you can imagine, in a town like Concord, affordability at that level is, is very crucial for certain people's lives. So it, those two in particular, I just want to know, what can we do to help improve their passage opportunities?
Good, good question, Matt. Just referring to the second bill first. We're talking about a credit for low income seniors that's expired. The legislation has to pass the House before it passes the Senate, because it was filed as a House bill.
Right, and we did review it with Representative Gueva as well.
Yeah, so, so that one. I, what I'm not going to do is handicap the odds of it getting through the other branch. Senators are notoriously bad guessers about what's going to happen in the House and vice versa. I can tell you that if it passes the House, I will push very hard to move it through the Senate quickly. As you know, succeed in doing this one. And so if we can get it through the House, I, I believe the Senate will be cooperative and quickly, because we approved this in the first round for the bill that is now. I'm not going to hazard a guess about how things are going to fare in the House itself. The, the trouble with this one so far is that it's still in the joint committee and can't move into the House. You, you guys probably know how our odds set up in Massachusetts. We have joint committees unlike Congress. That means that a hundred and sixty House members and forty senators split their time within the same big matter committee. So in any given committee, including the House committee, there will typically be a ratio roughly of three to one, House members to Senate members. So I can't make, I can't get the House, the to approve the bill that I want. Senators are, there typically only going to be four senators and about nine House members. That's what you get, and the, the good point about joint committees is you get some efficiency. It only has to move through one committee every two years. The rest of the news is that there isn't a balance between forty members on, in one branch and a hundred and sixty on the other. So on this one, we need to help Senator Gueva work with her House colleagues. They predominate on the Joint Housing Committee. And then get the bill through her branch so that I can get it over to my own. And I can only promise that, that I will communicate with the Joint Committee on Housing, but I don't have the votes on the Joint Committee on Housing.
Appreciate that, and is there anything that the select board or other officials can do to help get it out of that joint committee?
Well, I think you, I, calling me back, as you've done tonight, is a good move. I think that you should communicate again to Representative Gueva, if you haven't in the last month, let's say. The tempo steps up significantly the new year. Things slow down a little right now, but the pressure really is on on all of us legislators to deliver for our localities in the second year of a two-year session. So candidly, you should keep the heat on me and, and in this case, keep communicating with Representative Gueva. I've got to get those two Senate bills moving. I know that I'm going to get it out of the joint by February. She knows that her House bills for Concord are going to move out of their respective joint committees by February, and then it's a full court press. Because it's an election year, a lot of home rule bills will be approved. Everyone at the top of these pyramids in the Senate and the House are aware that the legislator looks bad if she or he can't get a committee, can't get a, a home rule bill approved by the end of the two-year session. So this is a big deal. It's high, as, as a general class of legislation, getting home rule bills into law is a big priority in the second year. You have a reasonable prospect, I think, of getting that particular bill to move. I, I don't want to forget to mention the, the building permit surcharge that Matt referenced as well. Still before the Housing Committee, once again, but because that bill has been approved in the past by the Senate, I'm hopeful, and it is a Senate bill. I'm hopeful that I can get it out of that committee certainly again by February and then see it quickly through the Senate so as to get it over to the House. I want to give Tammy a little time to work. Her hands are, she's doing a good job as in the House and at the same time statewide office, so I need to give her some time to do her thing.
Thank you. Okay. If there are not any more questions from the board, I'd like to open this up to the public. I know that we have already, let's see, Beth Kelly would like to ask a question. Beth here? Yes, I see that. Go ahead, Beth.
Hi, thank you. Thanks, Terry. Hi, Senator Barrett, my name is Beth Kelly. I live on thirty-nine White Avenue, and I'm co-chair of the White Pond Advisory Committee. I don't see one of our colleagues on the line. I'm, I don't see him, so I'll just ask the question. We had sent, we, the town actually sent two letters to the Massachusetts Department of Fisheries over a year ago requesting them to stop or to limit the amount of rainbow trout that were being stocked in White Pond. We never heard back anything from the Department of Fisheries. And so we formed a subgroup in our committee to look at multiple things. And one of the members, I think, sent a letter to your office, an email, asking if there was anything you could do to help us with that or to get somebody to respond to our request to actually reduce or limit or stop the rainbow trout specifically stocking. So I don't know if you
Yes, I am aware. Thank you, Beth, I have seen the letter, and I am aware of the holdup. And I am very supportive of your position. The eutrophication issue is a big deal, especially in some of our beautiful town ponds. It's, it's very worrying. In this particular case, the state seems to be aggravating the situation. So I promise you, I will have my staff, I think, in fact, my, I had my chief of staff come with me tonight virtually. So he's listening to us discuss Brendan Berger, and I will have Brendan follow up on the White Pond issue. I, I'm, I'm with you and would like to see the state stop aggravating and already challenging situation. That's, thank you, thank you for mentioning it, I appreciate it.
Yes.
And thank you.
In particular, if fisheries and wildlife could please respond to the letter, that would be very helpful.
Yes, I, yeah, I agree.
Other questions from the public?
All right, I just, I would ask that if people do want to ask a question, use the raise hand feature. I'm playing the role of Jeremy tonight and watching the participant list, so if you have a question, read, use the raise hand feature, please. And I don't see any of you want to
I don't see any either. But Senator Barrett, we will definitely be back in touch with you.
Terrific.
There's a lot to think about, and we will be bugging you and Tammy right after the holidays.
Bugging is good, it works.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Okay, we are now going to move on to a public hearing for the FY twenty-two tax classification.
Who's to open the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
On.
Ms. Bates.
Susan, just raise your hand if you want to go into, okay.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobado.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, hi.
Okay, great. And we have with us tonight Chair of the Board of Assessors, Tom Matthews. I see also Rick Lad, and I think I saw Kerry Littler, and there are perhaps others here. So Tom, do you want to start?
Yes, and good evening, and thank you for having me speak tonight. My name is Tom Matthews, I live at one thirty-five Elsinore Street. I just want to thank, as many of you know, our Town Assessor Elaine Partridge left the town a few weeks ago. So I just want to thank Carolyn D. and Rick Lad, who put this presentation together with the help of Rich Scanlon, who is our interim assessor. I am going to share my screen, because we have a presentation to walk through, and I will go through the presentation. Can everyone see this?
Not yet.
Oh, okay, hold on a second. Let me see. Can you see this now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is a presentation put together for the classification meeting, that we need the select board to take action on a few items. So for the outline, I'm just going to go through the tax classification for FY twenty twenty-two. Recertification, which will be coming up, new growth, total taxable value. And you can see the other items on here. I want to read through, through everything. The board currently consists of myself, Susan Livingston, Brendan Camesa, and Meritili, and we have a new board member who will be coming on as well. We'll go through the assess values, tax levy, tax rate, and then the Board of Assessors' recommendations on classifications. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly to respect everyone's time. If you have questions, feel free to ask them. If you have any technical questions, we have our staff here to answer them. So the Department of Revenue requires that the town be recertified every five years. We are currently in an interim year with a recertification coming up in fiscal year twenty-three. The process is fairly similar, but in a recertification year, the Department of Revenue does come out to the town of Concord and goes through the property cards and everything pretty closely. The twenty-two values have been approved, twenty-two growth has been approved, and we do expect tax bills to go out with the approved rate and on time, which is great when the Board of Ass, or the Assessors Department is in transition. The period we'll be looking at tonight will be from July first, twenty twenty, through July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, looking at those values. The residential value you're looking at here increased is around fifty-four, fifty-four million, five seventy-four to forty-five. And at a tax rate of fourteen seventy-two, that gives us taxes of eight hundred thousand, three, 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 a new tax revenue. Your growth came from standard growth of new construction, then we have condominiums, couple of two families, a little bit of land use. We also then look at commercial. So we did get some revenue increase from commercial, industrial, and also personal property. So the total growth for twenty twenty-two for the town of Concord comes in at about nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Okay, any questions so far? Is the pace okay?
Yes, that seems like a relatively low amount of growth. I just thought that property values were increasing pretty dramatically in Concord over the past year, and that we have had quite a bit of new construction and renovation. So this is surprisingly modest.
Yeah, the growth is small, like about two percent for this year, but next year we're going to see a big jump, because twenty was a split year. You had low values back in March when COVID hit, so the real estate market like hit a pause, nothing happened. Everything got shut down, and it wasn't until later in the year that the market started taking off again. So you'll really see an uptick in values in the following year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right.
Don't see any, no.
All right, move on. So looking at the total taxable values, the town for fiscal year twenty-one, and that, Mr. Johnson, this is where you'll see the difference in values. Residential is only up two point three percent. Commercial industrial is up one point nine percent, the total is two point three percent. And we talked about this at length with the Board of Assessors, because what you're going to see next year is the values are up about ten percent. So you're going to see a big jump, and we had talked about trying to level it out to lessen the impact, but it was just too much to try and manipulate with the, trying to have the tax bills out on time. But you, you're going to see that next year, so you will see that acceleration of the marketplace reflected in next year's classification presentation.
A question on that, I think I know the answer, but just for the public watching. When values go up ten percent, that doesn't mean that tax bills go up ten percent, right?
You're going to see a jump. I don't know what the exact number will be, but the value, they, there will be a significant uptick in values.
Right, but then the tax rate will proportionally decline in order to make the revenues come out to whatever the town's revenue growth.
I'm going to, yeah, I'd have to call in the town staff to give you specific answers, because this is a little bit outside of my
Well, I just, I just don't want there to be
So why don't we bring in Rick Lad or Rich Scanlon, because they can answer this question to a T. If they want to come on.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, I can answer that. My name is Rich Scanlon, I'm the interim town assessor, I took Elaine Partridge's place back in October. What, what the gentleman was stating was correct. Just because the values go up ten percent doesn't necessarily mean that the tax bills will go up ten percent. As the chair stated, I would expect some type of tax increase next year, but it's not proportional to the increase in valuation, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. That's outside of my expertise. All right. Moving on, so the tax levy calculation, last year's tax levy was ninety-two million, two eighty-one, one, one, six. We start in twenty twenty-two with ninety-five million, five, four, five, nine, seven, one. We add in the two and a half percent allowed increase. We then add in the new growth, so our total before debt is ninety-eight million, nine oh five, five oh three. When you add in debt exclusion, you get a maximum permitted levy of one hundred and five million, seven, seven, four, eight, four, six. Our property tax levy is a hundred million, seven, six, four, seven, seven, four. So your unused levy limit is five million, ten, zero, seven, four, and this unused levy limit is used for, you know, fiscal future planning. So we are recommending that the tax rate be set at fourteen seventy-six per thousand. When you're doing the calculation, gives us a tax rate of fourteen seventy-six. And you can see that, and this will be applied uniformly to single families, condominiums, and these are the increased values, the average single family values and so forth. So the classification issues, you have the residential factor. So in previous years, when we've presented this, the residential factor was set just slightly below one, because we were doing a slight shift to account for the seniors' mean exemption. Right now, that's being paid out of the overlay account, so we are going to be setting the residential factor at one. This will be a uniform tax rate for all classes, residential and open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Setting the rate at anything other than one will have a differential rate, and we find that Concord's ninety-two percent owner occupied. So setting a rate and moving to a shifted rate puts too much burden on our small commercial property that we have in town. And Concord has used a uniform tax rate since nineteen ninety-eight. So the Board of Assessors is, is recommending to, for you to set a tax rate, a single tax rate with a residential factor of one. So the next issue is open space discount. There is currently no parcels that are using this. It only allows a maximum, maximum discount of twenty-five percent, and most large owners in town use sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B, which allows a discount anywhere between seventy-five percent to ninety-eight percent. So we're recommending that you do not adopt the open space discount. The next issue is the classification issues, is the residential exemption. So the exemption is a misnomer, since it's an actually a tax shift among residential properties. It's difficult to implement, since most town, most of the homes in town are owner occupied. And there's minimal like of apartment buildings to shift the tax. And there's minimal like of apartment buildings to shift the tax to. We have found that only 13 of the 351 communities in Massachusetts have adopted this exemption. Nine of them are inner city, three are on the Cape, and one is on the South Coast. So the Board of Assessors does not support the adoption of a residential exemption. The final thing we have to present to you today is the small commercial exemption. And the intent of this exemption is to give a tax reduction to small commercial property owners at the expense of larger commercial and industrial parcels. The question of fairness arises since the legislation is based upon this assumption. So the Board of Assessors does not support the adoption of the small commercial exemption. So here's the summary of this presentation to you tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. So the Board of Assessors is recommending that we have a single tax rate in adopting the minimum factor of one. And the Board of Assessors does not recommend the adoption of open space discount, the residential exemption, or the small business exemption. And as I mentioned earlier, the senior means tested exemption, this is, as Senator Barrett said, is still in the logjam at the State House. So for the time being, this is being paid out of the overlay accounts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. So are there questions from the board?
Thank you, Tom and Board of Assessors for this presentation. I know at your recent meeting, you talked about releasing the, or consideration for releasing the overlay fund. And I guess my concern is at the town meeting last year, we did have an appropriation that was approved by town meeting from the overlay fund to cover the senior means tested exemption. And I just want to make sure with whatever action you recently took that there still is enough money in your overlay fund to cover that coming up in the future.
You know, based on what was released, the last, I think we apportioned $150,000 out of the overlay for that. And I think right now the overlay has about $3 million in it. So there seems to be ample money. What we voted on at the meeting on Thursday was to release $1 million into the fund, the state debt stabilization fund for the middle school, with the caveat that that fund would be continued to be funded at the rate it's been funded at now, which is between 500,000 and 700,000. And what we also voted on was that we would be willing to revisit releasing more funds once we got through the abatement process because we do have some reservation and concern that although you see.
Tonight, let me just interrupt you, Tom. We have.
Yeah, you go ahead.
We have.
Yeah. Sure.
Agenda items tonight. So let's get through first the classification hearing. And then we will move on to the overlay. I think Linda's question is just before we take these votes on the senior.
Okay.
And all of this, we want to make sure we have enough funding.
Funny, there's tons of money there, yeah, for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for your response. Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions from the board about the tax classification presentation? Are there questions from the public? Please, please raise your virtual hand if you have a question. I don't see any. So I believe what we're supposed to do then is close the public hearing and then take votes on these issues. Is that correct?
Sounds right to me. So move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, thank you very much for a great presentation. And at this time, let's go through all of the issues that the select board is supposed to vote on. So what is the first item that you want us to vote on?
Do you want me to bring that presentation back up? Would that be helpful?
I mean, can we just vote to approve the FY 22 class, tax classification as presented? Or do we have to explicitly set the tax rate?
I thought from previous meetings that there was a vote taken not to adopt the open space discount, not to adopt, you know, that each item had to be voted separately, but I, okay, I see Rick is nodding.
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair. You should vote, vote the three other exemptions and then vote the minimum residential factor one.
Okay, so I think that would be helpful to bring up the presentation again. So to each of those items, and so we can formulate a motion for each and, and make our vote.
Sure.
I'll just pull up that summary page.
Right.
So here's the summary page. This should give you everything you need.
Okay, so I'll start with the bolted items in the middle.
No, there's one on the top before that.
Okay. I, I just thought that we would do that with the tax rate itself.
If I could, Madam Chair, generally you would vote the three bulleted items first. And then vote the residential factor, the minimum residential factor.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Let's do that.
So move not to adopt an open space discount for FY 22.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. Move not to adopt a residential exemption in FY 22 in the town of Concord.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
In voting aye, I am voting not because I don't favor the residential exemption, but I think that the adoption at this point would be premature. And we need to know more about the financing of the Concord Middle School before we seriously consider that issue. But I will vote aye for the present on this.
Okay, so signing statement. Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, the next one.
Move to not adopt a special, a small, sorry, move not to adopt a small business exemption in Concord for FY 22.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, now do we vote the single tax rate?
Yeah, so move to adopt a single tax rate by adopting a minimum residential factor of 1.0.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Second. I mean, I.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. Okay, and then we need to adopt the tax rate itself.
Right. So I think that was $14.76.
Right. Okay, move to adopt a uniform tax rate of $14.76 per thousand in Concord for FY 22.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, does that cover all of the votes that we need?
That's it.
Great. Thank you for excellent presentations. It's a very complicated subject and you were able to cover it in a way that is very easily understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will move on to the subject of the overlay surplus. Just to give a little background, this committee was charged at the end of September with looking into how to increase the stabilization fund for the middle school building project. And one of the ideas they came up with was to take a look at the overlay and see if the assessors would be willing to release any money from overlay surplus and/or to ask the town manager not to fund the usual 500,000 or so that we put into the overlay surplus each year. So the assessors met a few days ago and discussed these two items. And we thank you very much for having that discussion. Tom, do you want to let us know how that discussion went?
Yes, the Board of Assessors wants to work with the town. We, we all feel we kind of have to row together to make this school funding as affordable as possible. So our decision was to release $1 million into the debt stabilization fund with, with the kind of caveat that the funding will continue. And we also, as part of our emotion, are willing to revisit releasing more funds after the abatement period. Mr. Johnson had referenced the fact that the town has experienced exceptional rate of growth with our sales prices of real estate. I happen to work in real estate, but one of the considerations the Board of Assessors talked about is that in the last 24 months, there have been about 500 homes that have participated in this great real estate market. But there are 5,500 other homes that have not. And we just want to make sure that the impact of COVID-19, of people being out of work, that what level of abatements we're going to have this spring, particularly the impact it could have on our commercial, industrial, personal areas. And once we get through abatement season, if the, if there are ample funds available, we would be willing to revisit releasing more funds to the debt stabilization fund. There was a precedence back in 2017 where 1.5 million was released for technology. So we felt at this time, releasing $1 million was a good way to get the fund further established and are willing to revisit it after abatement season.
And we really appreciate your willingness to do that. I know that the finance committee has a target of 5 million for their stabilization fund. 2 million in there now with this release of 1 million, where it makes some excellent progress. And we really appreciate your attitude of everyone growing together to make this school a great school and an affordable school. So thank you. And we will definitely be inquiring when your rebound season is over to see how much more we can put into that stabilization.
Absolutely. Understood.
So at this time, does the select board need to take any kind of a vote to officially ask you to release this money? Or is there any other, we need to send you a letter or, or maybe Carrie Lefler can answer this. Is there any procedural thing that, that has to be done at this point?
Or I, I would be happy to answer. And no, there is not anything needs to be done. This is an action that really is solely at the discretion of the Board of Assessors. And since they have voted, the funds are available for appropriation by town.
Fabulous. I think my question is based on the fact of some history I have where we had some reluctant boards of assessors in other towns. And we, the select board did have to send several letters to try to urge them to release funds. So thank you for making it so easy. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the board or questions?
Did I understand Ms. Lefler to say that this was a decision that was in, in the, in the purview of the Board of Assessors? And therefore, the select board had really nothing to say about whether or not this, this transfer was made. Is that correct?
So it, it is, the overlay account is under the jurisdiction or, or purview of the Board of Assessors. They are the only body that can vote to release funds. And there is no further action that the select board needs to take to make these funds available for further appropriation.
So we're only spectators at this point.
Spectators.
Does the, I see.
Very appreciative spectators, yes.
I, I see that the Chair of the FinCom is sitting here with us tonight. I wonder if she has anything to say about this.
I do. Thank you, Henry. I, I'm just, the same things that Terry said. I'm very pleased that we had such a quick response to, to this recommendation. It's, it's very helpful. So thank you to the Board of Assessors.
Welcome.
Okay, and have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much again. To move on to the next item. However, I see that the time, it's a public hearing and the time is listed at 7:50 PM because I thought we would be running way over. So this is actually good news. But legally, we cannot start the public hearing until at least 7:50 PM. So I think we will move on. Let's see. Wonder, let's take up a few small items. So I'm not sure how long that reprecincting will take. So let's move to item number 10, review and accept CMLP financial audit. So the Financial Audit Advisory Committee meets and we have completed our work on the annual auditing cycle. The last two audits that were done were CMLP and the regional school district. And tonight, we are going to be talking about the CMLP audit. And in the future, we will be talking about the town audit. Carrie, do you want to briefly go over what came out of this audit?
Oh, I was not expecting that we were, we were going to do that. I, I assumed that the report of the audit committee was provided. And typically, the, the auditors come in and they make a very detailed presentation to the Audit Advisory Committee. And that's really where all of the discussion and presentation of the audit results are made and a review of any management letter items. And there's a discussion and follow-up by that committee. That committee then prepares sort of an executive summary to each of the audits and then presents it to the respective governing bodies just for acceptance into the record. And we typically haven't gone through any of that in detail. There were management letter items that came out of the 2020 light plant audit. So that's, it's in good shape. This is probably the fastest that we were able to get through the CMLP audit. And that is a testament to the, the staff, particularly their financial staff over there. This is, it's a great improvement over past years. And it really couldn't have gone any better than it did. And that's, that's pretty much the level of detail that we get into at this presentation. But the audit committee meetings are open to the public and there's a lot more detailed discussion that occurs at that level.
Correct. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Linda?
So Carrie, thank you. And yes, in fact, much of what you said was captured in the letter to the board. So thank you for that. I would just ask, since there were a number of items that were pointed out for supplemental management points, I guess I would describe it as, it, will the audit committee be following up? Or have they suggested to follow up with CMLP as they've done in the past?
There were not any specific follow-up items as a result of, of that audit. So the, the letter that you were referring to is. the letter that you were referring to is provided to 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 help make improvements to financial record keeping and and the audit process. And I don't recall there being any specific follow-up, but those are items that the auditors track and and any progress or in the other direction, they certainly would call that to our attention.
So they'll be tracking it for over the next year. So thank you.
And if I recall correctly, there were some items from previous management letters that were tracked and they've now corrected and improved in this audit, if I'm remembering correctly.
So terrific.
Overall, a very, a very good audit report, yes. So I believe you are looking for a vote to accept, the Select Board is supposed to accept this financial audit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So move to accept the Concord Municipal Light Plant Financial Audit as included in the meeting materials.
Second. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman. Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobado.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie. You have accepted that report. I think the next item, number eleven, will also be short. Oh, this, if you recall, we had a focus meeting about and I then went back and took a stab at A P P ten with Jeremy's help. And you see in the packet, the marked up, we've changed green card to volunteer card. We've added in all possible efforts to seek out candidates of diverse cultural, religious, socioeconomic, national, racial, and ethnic backgrounds, in addition to individuals with diverse sexual orientation, income, and ability slash disability. And the other big change is in number well, letter C, dual appointments, we've added. However, the Appointing Authority may make exceptions from time to time on a case by case basis. Those are the two big, big things that have changed. Most of the rest of it is wordsmithing or changing green card to, oh, there's a third one. Right before that, at the end of B, it says, we've crossed out this part. Intended that reappearance under this section seven C shall be rare. We took that part out. So it's been a couple of months since we looked at this, and primarily our agendas have been too busy to fit this item on. But are there questions from board members on this? Linda?
So in general, I I think the changes that were made and that we previously discussed make a lot of sense. I guess I would just like to revisit one item, and that is where the sentence that you just said was removed. You know, that something to the extent that dual appointments would be rare, you know, and I am aware that we do have several individuals who were recently in the last year appointed to several committees, more than two, more than one committee, certainly. And I'm just wondering if and you may be closer to this or the town manager or someone else, I'm just wondering if we see a pattern there and why and why that happened? And we weren't able to reach out to other citizens to expand, you know, citizen engagement.
I'm not sure I recall the one you're talking about, Linda, because I actually think in my time here, it has been very rare that people have been even applied for a third term on board or a committee. I think people generally adhere to the tradition. But I'm not sure, we may have done it.
To apply for a second committee or be. So there may not be a pattern. And I I guess, since I'm aware of at least two or three of these that have happened in the last year, I would just hope that we continue to reach out to as many citizens as possible for to enlarge engagement. But I am appreciative of the service that everyone's giving. So thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
The especially with regard to the appointment to multiple committees, where we thought it was appropriate, we've already provided for that in the charge of the specific committee, saying that people appointed to that committee might be ones who serve on other committees. And since the 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 A P Ps are adopted and by the Select Board, I think the approach we've taken is that where we wanted to make exceptions, we could make exceptions to the A P P for the purpose of either the specific committee, the specific charge, or even this specific appointment. And therefore, I'm not sure, and since I think I think we can see that special attention at least ought to be paid to those situations. And they want to provide for the maximum opportunity for for the largest number of individuals of of all kinds of of all kinds of talents and all kinds of resources that it might be better to remain rather make it so that it is more difficult, at least, to make multiple appointments. And therefore, that I think no change is needed. In fact, I'm that, I think that I think that all of the, all of the things that the changes attempt to recognize are things that the Board already recognizes in making the appointments to committees. And except for the change of the name of the piece of paper that people fill out. And in fact, it doesn't, there is no piece of paper anymore, I understand. It's an online thing. Is that I I'm not clear that any any changes are needed to the existing A P P? Because it's pretty much what we're doing anyway.
Okay.
I actually, I support the changes that have been made, the language that was inserted and the on page fifty-six, that seeking out, broadening the the candidate base that we're seeking to to incorporate a broader section of the town or people representative of different stakeholders in the town. And and I think it was, it is important to add some clarity to the dual if people serve on two committees, because there's a couple of different circumstances. One is the one that Henry mentioned, where if you're you know, if you're a member of the Planning Board, then you may also be not the Planning Board member appointed to the CPC or one of those very specific situations. But the other is that there's a committee that's been looking for people. There's there are members that are serving on other committees and their service on the second committee served is in no way conflicting with the service on the first, so that it seems reasonable to allow that to happen and but on a on a case-by-case basis. Because that's, I I think there have been a few people have come to the fore, or I've been aware of a few people for whom it was it, there is no conflict whatsoever with serving on the you know, on two different committees that have absolutely no interface. But the candidates have the talents and the time to do it. And the committees have been without for a while. So it's another, it's another method we can use to keep committees running.
Right. And we had a number of new committees and we had a lot of new candidates that had never served at all on a town committee. So that was very exciting. Very good recruitment efforts.
So that and that was without any changes to the A P P.
Right, but there was one person that we did appoint who is not quite finished with his term on another committee. So we didn't exactly follow it with that.
So I I agree with many of the comments that Susan made. And I guess maybe as I listen to all this, the one question I have is whether or not we really want to eliminate that sentence that says it's, you know, it'll be rare.
Let me just clarify, there was two different things. Susan was talking about the dual committee appointments.
Right.
The sentence about it being rare has to do with members who have served a three-year term twice are are not usually appointed to the third term. That's the one that says it is intended intended that reappearance under this section shall be rare.
So I I think that sentence should be left in because there is another section in the A P P ten that says, you know, when there are certain conditions when a term can be extended, you know.
Right, right.
Institution. I would just like to, I I think keeping that it is rare keeps it in check. Do you know what I'm trying to express?
Right. So this section outlines three possible reasons why you would let someone go for the third term. It says.
Which I, which I think are appropriate.
Right. Okay.
I was just gonna say, I just checking the time, I think maybe maybe we should suspend on this and go to the hearing.
Well, I think we're just about finished with this. Matt, did you have any comments on this?
I'm fine with either way. So whatever the well of the board, I did have a more trivial remark, which is on the section E toward the bottom of that same page. There was a strike of that elected officials replaced with that elected official. And I believe it actually should that that elected officials was correct originally. I have no idea why it was struck and replaced with the singular.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're implement on most of these changes. The one that.
And if you were to restore the sentence that was struck that Linda was suggesting to restore, the reference, the section reference there is not correct. It would have to be seven B, not.
Correct. That's right. Seven B. So I guess it sounds like we have a consensus and maybe we're ready for a motion to amend A P P ten as shown in the packet, except restoring those two sentences at the bottom of section B and going back to the original language about in section E about that elected officials.
So move.
Okay, roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
No.
Ms. Escobado.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we are ready to move to the public hearing. Thank you for waiting. I see Mr. Levin.
Move to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Point of order, I believe that the hearing was opened at our last meeting and it was remained open. We just voted to continue the hearing.
That's right.
Hearing is still open.
Right, the motion is move to continue the public hearing. That's the correct motion. Well, let's start over with it.
Move to continue the public hearing.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobado.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, so just briefly, Mr. Levin, thank you for waiting. And I just wish to apologize for a remark that was made last meeting when we were taking a look at this. And I just really want to state that the Town of Concord and the Select Board do not condone any type of divisiveness. We want to be a welcoming community for all people. And if any remark was made intentionally, unintentionally, we apologize for that. So thank you again, Mr. Levin. I see that you have amended your paperwork for this request. Do you want to make any remarks about that?
I mean, the remarks are simple. There were some changes, typographical changes that were made. There is a supplement, an amendment made to the purchase and sale agreement. And we've added some additional information about the manager and this group's additional locations that the manager operates on behalf of this group. Happy to answer any questions that the Board may have or address any remaining open issues that that the Board may have.
Okay, are there questions, Henry?
I just want to say that I have reviewed the revised application. And it addresses all of the issues that that I thought to raise the last time around. And I think most importantly, the the there's been a background check done by the Concord Police Department that fully endorsed the suitability of the applicants for this for this license and has determined by consulting the other communities in which these these owners have operated other licenses, that there have been no violations in those communities for those licenses. And therefore, I think that all the issues we had at our last meeting have been successfully and adequately addressed. And I would be fully, fully ready to vote to approve this application.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, are there questions or comments from the public? Please raise your virtual hand if you have a question or comment. Seeing none, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobado.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion from board members? Okay, we will entertain the motion.
Move to approve the application of the transfer of license, pledge of inventory, and pledge of license from J M M S Liquors, D B A Walden Liquors, located at eighteen Walden Street to Sunnyside Enterprises.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
I.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you very much and best of luck with your new enterprise.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Hey, we are now moving on to reviewing and voting the precincting proposal.
What?
I think Kari is here. And Kari, do you have some people from the Board of Registars with you?
Yes, actually, we'd like to. By a roll call vote, come into session. So this is a joint meeting at this point. Wendy, if you'd like to call the meeting to order. Oh, we, we can't hear you.
Wendy, you're on mute.
Apologize. Okay, good evening. I hereby call this meeting together. Those in favor? Wendy, by roll call vote or announcement, Wendy. Here. Anne.
Here.
Here.
And myself, Kari, here. And so. Wendy, would you like to start or would you like me to start? Why don't you start, Kari? Thank you. So the registrars are before you tonight. To ask for your vote to adopt the updated 2020 re-presincting plan that is included in your packet. And is recommended by the registrars. As a reminder, from the November eighth meeting of the select board. This re-presincting plan is based on the 2020 federal census population of eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-one. And the 2021 redistricting plan by the state legislature. Which divides Concord between the thirteenth and fourteenth middle six districts. And Jill Moonharin, our GIS analyst is here as well, and I'm going to ask her to share the screen. When, when we were at your meeting on November fourth, you asked us if we could go back to the map. And look at what we could do to allow more neighborhoods to stay together. And to keep changes to a minimum. So we, we met with residents from precinct four. That was one of the areas that had been divided by the line. And we looked very closely at the numbers because remembering that we have to balance. The population between the five precincts, our target population is three thousand six hundred ninety-eight. And we have to stay within five percent of that. So the minimum is three thousand five hundred thirteen and the maximum is. Three thousand eight hundred eighty-three. So looking at. Precinct four, Jill, if you can zoom into precinct four, there was an area. And now there's a very small area. Of Conantum neighborhood that was in precinct three, leaving a. Small area still in precinct four. And so what we've been able to do is move. Most of the neighborhood to precinct four and the area that is. Closest to Sudbury Road and that's Oxbow Road, they would remain in precinct three. Both precincts three and four are in the thirteenth middle sex district. And so the challenge with the redistricting is that we, whatever changes we make, we want to keep the precinct lines from crossing. The. Read the district lines. So, so that means that we can't stretch precinct four into precinct five. Or, or make any other moves around that, that bring us outside of the, the district lines. So that was the first change that we made. Then moving over to. Things two and three, we have looked at the possibility of, of moving. An area, the westmost part of precinct one to precinct two. And. What happened was the, because, because there is one area that is quite large. This area here. This would cause precinct two to exceed. Population boundaries that it has to remain in. Around the target population. And, and then we looked at the other areas, which. Oh, thank you, Jill, for showing the numbers. So, so the other areas that are outside of the, the blue outline. Those are, are also. Census blocks that we could move. But we have to be careful not to create an island of one precinct within a different precinct. And also moving, for instance, the population, the fifty-one and forty-eight population. That would mean that the, the houses outside of those lines would still be in precinct one. So, so those didn't seem like they would really balance what we were trying to do. What we were however able to do was to move. Two areas. The hundred eighty, which is. Right, so these two areas, one is where the train station is and the other is around Beharal Street. So those two areas, we were able to move from precinct one to precinct two, which we thought made sense. Because those are in very close proximity to the polling location. So that, that keeps with the goal of, of. Allowing, you know, people within walking distance to be able to walk to their polling location. And then the, the final change that we had made was. Moving over to. Between precincts five and one. Precinct. The area that's now highlighted was previously in precinct five. Where that is a, a proposed polling location, one forty-one Kaiser Road. We thought that it would make sense to have the residents of one hundred Kaiser Road. Also in that precinct so that they could walk to their precinct. And so those are the, the precinct changes from the last meeting that we are recommending to the select board. And so we also looked at the polling locations. And precinct one has traditionally been at one forty-one Kaiser Road. We, we did have them voting with the select board permission at Townhouse for the. Presidential election, but generally they have been at one forty-one Kaiser Road. That's polling locations are easier to change than precinct lines. So what we're showing is, is what we are recommending right now. Precinct two and three would remain at Harvey Wheeler Community Center. They are in different districts. They will have different ballots for state and federal elections.
Wow.
But they are two distinct precincts as well. And then precincts four and five, we, there, there's a little bit of activity still happening around that. So for the moment, we are recommending that precincts four and five both vote at the Hunt Gym. But we are also in discussion with the Housing Authority. To have precinct five vote at Peter Buckley Terrace. So I will be meeting with the residents at Peter Buckley Terrace next week. And the Housing Authority will be discussing this and possibly voting next Thursday. And so we may be coming before you again to see if there is a polling location change that you would consider. But we don't, we don't have that in hand right now, and it would also need to be certified by the state. So it has to have the ADA compliance, which we believe is no problem. But we don't have that to offer right now. What we do have are two precincts, thanks to Anna McKeon, who's the. Recreation Director, has very kindly offered that we can have two precincts voting at Hunt Gym. So one would be voting in the all-purpose room and the other would be voting in the gym. Tentatively. And so this, so this is what I can, what we can offer today. But we are in ongoing discussions about Peter Buckley Terrace, which is a very exciting prospect for the residents. Of Peter Buckley Terrace and Housing Authority. I have spoken with Captain Mulcahy about this as far as traffic. There have been large events held at Emerson Playground, so it is not assumed that this is going to be a problem for Election Day. I don't know if any other registrars have anything to add. No, Kari, you did a good job there.
Thank you, Kari, and, and the registrars and Anna at Recreation. That is very exciting news, both at Hunt Gym and Peter Buckley. That would, I think, solve a lot of issues for many people. And if I could. Ask about the armory. There were some discussions about possibly using the armory as a polling place. What is the status of that right now?
Well, at, at this point, it's, it's a nice thought. There, I think, needs to be a more formal request. To the National Guard to see what the potential is, but it certainly is. It would, it would be very beneficial, but we just don't, we just don't have. Anything formal in place. That will be a, a separate process. But as I said, polling locations are much easier to change. Than precinct lines. This is, this is the opportunity for the town to set precinct lines for the next ten years. This needs to be submitted to the local. Election District Review Commission by December fifteenth, but they want it sooner if possible. Because all of these changes have to be put into the, the centralized voter registry so that we can notify voters of changes.
Okay, so. I'll get, I'll get to a question from Linda in one minute. Let me just follow up about the armory. Henry has been working with the National Guard. Is there anything that you think would be helpful from the select board at this time? Do you want a letter from us explaining that how useful, how much we do have a need? For a polling location? Do you, do you need a letter from the select board or any other action? On the armory? Kari, I guess I'm asking you, or him?
Let, let me just add that it would be one more potential municipal use to which armory could be put.
Right. So would it be helpful for the select board to send in a letter? Or the town clerk to send a letter, or the registrars, or, or all of us? What, what would help right now?
I think that the more people that express an interest. On the town's behalf is helpful. But Henry, do you think that will be helpful?
I, I, I agree that the more people. Yeah, I, I, I think that's probably right, although I think we probably ought to have, have at least some coordination in the approach we take to it. Because I think we want to send a clear message, especially with regard to. What we would like to, to have happen with the armory. And not get the process to diffuse. But I think we have a, we have a good list already of uses. And maybe we can get a, a, a larger constituency to sign on to. A letter that I am actually working on drafting right now. I have been diverted for the last week or two with some other. Issues that we're dealing with.
I, I will send you some language and copy, Kari, about everything at the town clerk's office. And the registrar has through in the last few months. To avoid people being disenfranchised because they could not find a good polling location. I will write up some drafts on that. And then, Kari. And the registrars and Henry, you guys can mark it up and how you, how you like and add it to Henry's letter. How does that sound?
Before we, can I make a suggestion? I, I think we should also talk to Kate, who's had some correspondence. I, I think. You know, have, have we done an assessment of the suitability of the armory? To be a, a polling location other than its geographical location? Have we looked at, is it ADA compliant? What is access for, you know, restrooms, things like that? I, I think we need to know that before we ask the National Guard to be able to use it.
I think that the first thing that we need to do is to find out if we have some. Rational proposals for municipal use that we find out whether the National Guard is interested. And if it's available and if they are interested in, in making some kind of arrangement with the town. Once we find out whether they're interested in making such an arrangement with us. Then we can go and do our diligence with regard to the individual uses that we're considering. And decide what kind of investment, if any, would be required to make it suitable. And what terms or conditions we would be willing either to ask the National Guard to. Extend to us or what, what commitments we would be willing to make. In, in exchange for their turning it over to the town. So I think the first thing we need to do is make a plausible case for our municipal uses. And find out the extent of their interest in dealing with us over it.
Also, I believe there's some initial look at accessibility and, and. There's, Kari, you looked into that a little bit. Is that correct?
Yeah, it, from the outside, it appears to be accessible. There's, there is an elevator access.
What I will do is, I think we should include Kate in the discussion. I know she is out of town right now. I will also copy Kate. And this is just some sample language that could maybe be incorporated into Henry's letter. So Kate, Kari, Stephen and Henry, you can all mark up. My language and, and we'll see what our next step is.
It looks like Matt has a question here.
Right, and I think Linda, Linda had a question and then Matt.
Yeah, so, um, thank you. Um, thank you to the Board of Registars and Kari and everyone who's worked on this. I know this has not been an easy task. One comment I was going to make had to do with the accessibility of, of the armory. But what I'd like to comment on at this point is the reason we're seeking additional polling places. At the. Peter Buckley. I, I assume in addition to the Hunt Gym or somewhere else as we're talking about now, potentially. Is because we want to lessen the, the. Use of the Hunt Gym for this purpose, or could someone just speak to that briefly?
As to why we would look for another, a location other than the Hunt Gym?
Or in addition to it, sounded like, yeah.
So we're looking, we're, we're trying to have the polling locations located as centrally to the precincts as possible. You know, that is fairly difficult to do for precinct five because there aren't public buildings in the middle of precinct five. But what precinct four in the past has voted at the Ripley Building. That is not centrally located in precinct four and the Hunt Gym. Or Peter Buckley Terrace or the Armory, if, if those are all possibilities and we don't know that right now. That is a central area for precinct four. It also happens to be in precinct five. And so it's an opportunity for that reason to allow the, the residents in that area to walk to their polling location.
Okay, so, um, thank you. That, that's helpful to understand. So besides the central location, you know, when you, especially when you're talking about the Hunt Gym, Peter Buckley Armory area, parking can be a real challenge in that area. And at least at Ripley, even though it's not centrally located, there were more parking opportunities, it seems. So I'm sure you've considered that already, but.
We have, and that's why we're talking to the Police Department. We want to be sure that, that safety issues are considered in, in any of our recommendations and there have been large events held at Emerson Playground successfully. Voters do not spend a lot of time in the polling place when they're voting. So it, it seems like the, the traffic flow should not be too much of a problem.
Yeah, okay, good. Can you just remind me of the when you talk about two congressional districts? Can you just remind me where that fell again?
That is along the boundary of precincts three and four. So precincts three and four are in the 13th Middlesex District. Precincts one, two, and five are in the 14th Middlesex District.
Okay, thank you. Again, thanks for all your work on this.
Um, Matt?
I, I just wanted to share my appreciation with the Board of Registrars, the Town Clerk, and our consultant for making the best of a bad situation here. And in particular, just to thank them for the creative solution of looking at the Herald Street and Kai's Road. I hadn't thought of that. And I think that it, it really makes a dramatic difference to those groups who would be inclined, I think, more than others to walk to their precinct and they're very adjacent practically to their precinct polling location. And then finally, that the polling location for Precinct One is now moved within the precinct. I think that's a real bonus as well. I mean, I know it's not strictly required, but it, it makes it feel a little less extreme than it probably is. So, thank you and, and thanks for your creativity and persistence.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from board members?
I just want to add my thanks. It's the liaison to the Board of Registrars. I participated in several of their meetings. And I know how mightily they've struggled to come up with a rational solution to the problem that was thrown at them. The, the issue of having the town split into two congressional districts and then having the state determine the legislative districts after that without any consideration of our, our local needs. It, it became a a mind-bending puzzle to come up with a solution that is, that is at least viable and practical and meets, I think, meets everybody's needs. And I, I should emphasize the fact that it's only the precincts that need to be approved and sent to the state. And that is what remains permanent for the next 10 years. But the polling places are a lot easier to move as we find other options and other needs to deal with that. And thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yes, I've worked tirelessly for a few months now. I believe you had every So at this time, are there any questions from the public? Maybe we could stop screen sharing? Uh, Lola Suarez?
Lola Suarez, 34 Everett Street. I'm a little confused. Where, where would I vote? The Peter Buckley Building or the Hunt Gym or it looks like you've switched. So we went out over to Kai's Road anymore, but I just was, I, I couldn't quite tell by the callers.
So, so right now, what we're proposing, if I may, Madam Chair, we're, we're proposing that both precincts four and five vote at the Hunt Gym. So that means that, that you would vote at the Hunt Gym until or unless there's a change by the Select Board.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds awesome. I thank you so much for your work on that because we were walking by an open polling place to go across town to vote the past 10 years. So thank you for returning that to the neighborhood or the possibility of it. Appreciate that a lot. Thanks again.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. This has been obviously a monumental task. I hope that you could give me, give two pieces of information. Carrie, will you be mailing to every resident in, in information about where they vote? And I hope the League of M voters and the Voter Service Committee can help to facilitate meetings that whether we record them on MMN and work with Carlin Reed to do this, or whether we or whether we have First Fridays or whatever, in order to help citizens know where they vote and how they vote. So if you could answer that first question first, and, and I know that the League is prepared to help in whatever way we can.
Yes, thank you for asking the question. We will be sending out a townwide mailing as soon as we have the updated information in our voter registration system. And that will be well before the February 3rd special town election so that people know where to go to vote. And we will also include on, on the back of that notice an absentee ballot application because vote by mail was, has not been extended. But, but people need to know that absentee voting is, is still available. It's, it's not quite the same as vote by mail, but it's still for people who will be out of town or, or unavailable to get to the polls because of illness or that type of thing, that they can vote absentee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, so if there are no more questions from the public, I believe see, any of the board is Carrie, you're looking for us to vote the precinct lines tonight, right, and, and adopt these precincts? And also are you looking for us to to drop these polling places?
Well, I, I think the precinct map has the polling places, so maybe that can be a separate vote, but there is, there is specific language for the re-presenting that is basically to accept the 2020 re-presenting plan as presented by the Town Clerk for the Town of Concord.
Move to accept the 2020 re-presenting plan as presented by the Board of Registrars this evening.
Second. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Great. And would like us to vote these polling places with the understanding that you may have to come back if there's a change, but at least you'll have them for now.
Yes.
Um, so I don't have a specific motion, but it would be right to set the polling places for precincts two and three to the Harvey Wheeler Center and precincts five and four, I believe it is, to the Hunt Gym and precinct one to Kai's Road. What is it, Public Works?
141 Kai's Road.
141 Kai's Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have that written down.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all, all of your work, all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your support.
Okay.
Hey, have a great Thanksgiving. Talk to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the item 12, vote to increase the RHSO revolving fund limit. Is Liz Rust here? Yes, she is. Hi, Liz.
Yes, hi, how are you? Good evening. I, I think Carrie is here as well, but I will present this information and and can follow up and I'm sure Carrie can support and answer any questions as needed. So you have a memo in your packet, I believe. And so this is a, what is now a pretty standard request to increase the expense spending limit for the RHSO revolving fund. This is a request to increase it by $50,000 to accommodate an increase in contracted services, which is fully offset by fees collected for these services. So there's no actual money impact for Concord. It's not assessing additional fees for Concord in any way. We had a plan for some amount of headroom, I call it, but have surpassed that in this first quarter with some unplanned works specifically for an, an emergency rental assistance program enacted the housing production plan development in Concord and some increase with Lincoln. There's also talk of, you know, additional work for Q3 and Q4. So this is the request to increase the spending limit as authorized by the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half. I know that this has come up pretty annually for probably the last three years. And we will work closely with Carrie this year to set a higher limit to accomplish, accommodate these supplemental increases requested from the member towns.
Thank you, Liz. What, what would happen if you set a, a really crazy limit? Like 500,000 or a million or, I mean, is there any downside? Why, why do we even need to set a limit?
Well, that's the, the Mass General Law requires setting an expense limit for the revolving funds. And I think it's the best practice to set a limit that represents what you really think you're going to spend. And not send something that's really way far above. But clearly, we've been too low for maybe the third year running. So that's what I mean. We'll, we'll take a, a look at it and see if we can't increase it. You know, a little bit more for next year.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Carrie, do you want to add anything to that? I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
No, Liz, that was a terrific answer.
I will just recall that we had this conversation last time.
Yes, we did. And I think we had it last time passed when the, the spending limit was already set for this year because it, we had the conversation in May. So this was already, the warrant had been done and, you know, and so things were along the way. So so this time it's early enough to, to set it. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that I think we're being a little too precise.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, it's a good problem to have in a way. It shows the success of the regional housing services model. So you know, nothing against you. It's, it's just you know, one less agenda item would like be nice to have.
You know, yes, you, that works for me as well.
Of course. Well, we thought you liked sitting here from 6:30 to 8:30. Okay, yeah. Any other questions from the board? Yeah, seeing none, we're ready for a motion. Matt, you're on mute.
Move to approve the increase of the Regional Housing Services Office revolving fund limit by $50,000 from $325,000 to $375,000.
Second. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next item, I just want to state that there is a lot of paperwork in the packet. And I think that page 204 in the packet, which is Liz's very brief email summarizes exactly what we want to do here and all of the rest of its background. So Liz, if you want to talk to this, go right ahead.
Yeah, very briefly. So the Select Board authorized I'm sorry, just to make sure I have my $100,000 in February for both the preservation of a unit at Emerson Annex as well as some repairs. The repairs came in under the budget, so this is a return to uncommitted funds from the town's affordable housing monies. So the money wasn't really spent. It's just moving it from committed to uncommitted. It's not actually moving anywhere, but it's just really you know, lifting that commitment for the last $5,000, which was never spent.
So where will this $5,000 go? Is, is there a pot of money that is uncommitted funds from other projects?
No, this is, well, this is the monies that were allocated from free cash. So it, it just hasn't ever left that fund. But it's been reserved for this purpose. So this is to just remove the reservation. So the money's not actually moving anywhere. I'm not sure really from, from a, you know, administrative perspective, what the Finance Department does, but it's saving that, that $5,000, you know, as part of that vote. So this is just releasing that.
So when you say that fund, what, what is the, the name of this fund?
I, I would really have to defer to Carrie on that. I don't know.
It doesn't allocation of spending budget.
It's a free cash appropriation for affordable housing that I think will now be under the, under the purview of the Affordable Housing Trusts. But it was, it's that same tranche of money that was town manager, subject to terms and conditions of the Select Board.
Exactly.
Okay, the, the free cash affordable housing funds that are now under purview of Affordable Housing Trust. Okay, got it. Okay. Are there questions about this? All right, it's nice to have something come in under budget. This is great. Okay, uh, ready for a motion?
Move to accept a return of $5,000 of uncommitted, to the uncommitted balances for the Emerson Annex Preservation Project. I would say, how about this, move to accept the return of $5,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of uncommitted balances for the Emerson Annex Preservation Project.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Great. Thank you much for your work on this, Liz. We have another item coming up later that you might join us with. I'm not sure. Okay, no problem. Have a happy Thanksgiving then.
Thank you. You as well.
Okay, we're ready for committee nominations, if there are any?
Yes, there's one nomination that was added today, just for those that had an earlier version of the agenda. It's Erica Proll, 1400 Lowell Road to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a term ending April 30th, 2022, in place of Molly Weirman, who defined appointment.
Okay, thank you. And committee appointments?
Move to appoint Alan Begosian of 1624 Main Street to the Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term set to expire May 31st, 2022. And Sustainability Director Amanda Cohen to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. We are ready for liaison reports. Who would like to go first, Susan?
Um, I'll start off. Um, Natural Resources Commission met last week and most of the business was fairly routine. There was an extended discussion on, uh, property at 821 Strawberry Hill Road regarding the placement of the building and the septic system. And subsequent to the meeting, there was a site visit. I, I was not able to attend that, so I'm not sure what the results of that. That'll probably come up again. The hearing is probably continued until the next NRC meeting. Um, the Council on Aging Board met, uh, last Tuesday. And, uh, one of the things they talked about was, um, uh, two of the members are going to be doing a series of articles, hopefully for the Journal, about uh, the, how the COA operated during COVID and different aspects of, um, their responsibilities that they did differently and, um, cover, or part of the, the objective is to raise the visibility of the COA and the many prog, programs and opportunities that, that exist there for elders. Um, Concord Local Cultural Council met. Um, and they are in this, their grant, uh, awarding period. And they, that takes place at this time of year, so they have, uh, denied some grants and those have, people have two weeks to appeal the denial. Um, and then the next meeting is going to be on December 1st, where they'll review, it'll be over two weeks since the last meeting, so they'll have all that information to be able to, uh, possibly finalize the grants. Commission on Disability met and, um, a number of members from the Act and Commission on Disability uh, were at the meeting and the topic was, there seems to be, uh, a, a situation at the hospital involving disabled people who may come to the hospital in an ambulance and not have a way to get home. And, um, because it's midnight or their equipment won't fit in a regular Lyft or Uber or various reasons, so, um, different towns are attempting to coordinate with the ombudsman at the hospital or the social worker who's sort of in charge of the, who is in charge of the transportation program, because it seems to be, um, uh, it, it comes up frequently. So they want to determine, one, what's the scope of the problem? Is it, is all this information, is it anecdotal or is, is it widespread? So they're gonna, not just Concord, but other towns are going to spend some time on, um, trying to help people get home from the hospital. Um, Conservation Coffee was held on, uh, 11 9, and there was a conversation about Brewster Woods with a, a Butters on Balls Hill Road and some others worried about traffic, uh, down to the site where, that the Audubon, uh, Society now owns. So, uh, nothing was decided, obviously, but it's, uh, that was a, a main topic of conversation, although it was pointed out that the option to the buccuses buying and donating that land was that there were already pencil plans in place for about 90 enormous houses down there. So this seems like a, less of a problem. Personnel Study Task Force met twice. And they're, uh, working on developing the, what, what it is they exactly want to focus on. And, um, what recommendations they want to end up making to Select Board about, uh, the personnel board, uh, responsibilities. So that's to be continued. Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee met, and that was a fairly routine meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, speaking of the COA and increased visibility, I got my booster shot there the other day and they were incredibly well organized. There were a lot of staff and volunteers and nurses. And it was just, they had hundreds of people come through. They're very successful.
But they, they, um, I, I should have mentioned that they processed, I think, 140 vaccinations. And it was pretty much their capacity. And there's another clinic on December 2nd, and I'll be there to get my booster shot. And that was filling up rapidly.
It was so convenient. So I was in and out in like 15 minutes, very well organized, doing a good job. Who would like to go next?
Can I just ask a question about that? Cause I've been asked this. Um, did they ask for proof that you had, um, reached your six months, um,
Yes.
eligibility?
You had to bring your card proving that you had the first two shots and what the dates were.
Good, thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next?
I can go next. Um, I met with Concord Housing Authority. They, um, are just about ready to sign their HUD repositioning. Um, and they expect hopefully that all this will be, um, finalized within the next six months. Takes a while for all these, uh, pieces to, to, um, fall in place. Uh, and they also have begun discussions with Habitat to see if there's any possibility that they may be able to help with building, uh, the building on Comms. Uh, the Cemetery Committee, um, has is in process, I guess, of doing a survey on the columbarium and they're working on mapping the new columbarium. Um, the committee is very serious about trying to upgrade, um, the grounds of, um, Sleepy Hollow or whether some areas that are particularly need attention, working on that. Um, the Historic Districts, um, Commission, um, has dealt with a couple very difficult applicant reviews this fall. Uh, but the one on Lowell Road, uh, came to a conclusion in terms of not, um, approving that project that was close to the Barrett Smith and Lowell Road corner. And that was very controversial in terms of the historic, um, nature of that area. So that builder was denied, um, permit to build there. Um, the Historic Commission, um, has been tackling a number of issues, uh, including, um, they've had a real uptick in terms of demolitions that have come before their committee as a result of the changes in the bylaw at our last town meeting, which is putting, um, a little bit of stress on staff resources, but also I think calling to their attention just how quickly some of these demolitions are occurring. I think I've dealt with eight just in the last, uh, couple of weeks. Um, they've also moved ahead with, um, initiating, uh, somewhat separately, but also related to historic issues coffees. They've now held successfully and, um, had a, a real positive response, 50 people, I think, to the first one and maybe 30 or so to the second one. They, uh, along with the Historic Commission are considering a scenic roads bylaw that would come to, uh, we're hoping as early as this, uh, town meeting. And the, um, Junction Village Open Space Task Force, um, we, uh, recently met again. Uh, they've had a rapid succession of, um, meetings because they both need to defend their application. It's before CPC, but also, um, trying to get this work done, um, while they have the consultant in tow. And they've now, uh, as a result of the public forums and other feedback that have come to them have uh, generated their third rendition and also detailed the budget, uh, uh, more closely for the $300,000 request that's going to CPC for this year. Um, CPC has, um, been hard at work as they always are. Um, they have finished their first round of interviews with the 12 applicants and have already begun thinking about the criteria, uh, considerations as they now move forward. And also, um, have considered where they needed more information and/or, um, have not yet received, uh, additional letters of support or supplementary material that they requested from the applicants in the first round. And their public hearing, as was noted in the town manager's, um, report is on November 30th, so, um, that, that public hearing will be important, uh, very important for all the applicants involved there. And I think that hits the highlights. I think there've been a couple more meetings, but those are the highlights.
Thank you. Uh, who's next?
I'll go next.
Okay.
Uh, so the Middle School Building Committee, uh, you know, they had approved a uh, amount of 103.7 million to include in the warrant for the special town meeting as the, uh, debt exclusion amount. But the committee has subsequently, uh, spent another, uh, entire meeting, uh, going through value engineering, uh, opportunities. And has, uh, narrowed the list considerably. I think that, uh, they've been able to take about, um, another million dollars off of, uh, the budget, uh, and, uh, we have a couple of really big items left to, uh, look at. And one is, uh, around, uh, soil removal, um, that could amount to quite a bit of money. Um, so we'll continue to be investigating that as we move towards the public hearing, but the, the goal is to be able to, uh, make a motion at special town meeting that is below the amount that's written into the warrant. Um, and, and believe that that could get very close to that $100 million item, except for the, uh, additional bidder contingency that, uh, has been added. That's, that's the general objective. I don't know if we'll get exactly there, but, um, certainly in, still in the realm of possibility. Um, the Tax Fairness Committee, uh, met and, uh, the big focus was, I think, on uh, the visit from Senator Barrett, uh, that was upcoming and, and just the circumstances that we have around our, um, you know, our exemption for, uh, seniors. And it just that, you know, the difficulty of, um, maintaining that and the necessity of using the overlay account, uh, which of course is being sought for dimensions to be used. So, um, that was one. Um, and then, uh, both the Climate Action Advisory Board and, uh, CSEC met. Uh, there's a lot of discussion and, and I think a certain amount of skepticism about the, the wisdom or benefit of combining uh, the committees or, you know, and, and other organization schemes, but certainly very lively conversation. Um, and then, uh, the Pollinators, uh, Health Advisory Committee met, uh, for the first time after being reconstituted and had a good first meeting. So, uh, those are the highlights, I'd say.
Great. Okay, thank you, Matt. Henry?
Um, the Civil War Monument Committee has been making very, um, substantial progress that they've been doing. Um, digging deeply into history and have found, uh, deeds and other, um, uh, evidence of the, um, uh, of George, uh, of George Dugan's, uh, in, inhabiting the town of Concord. His family, his occupations here, and, um, more information about his participation in, uh, the Civil War and the, and the, uh, all of the, uh, uh, official records. Um, they put together really a very substantial package. They had a meeting at the, um, Concord Museum, which has a display of artifacts, uh, from his homestead. Um, and, uh, they plan to go to the Historic District Commission in the beginning of January. I have no doubt they will be back to us well within the six month period that we gave them to do their job, asking us to proceed with the, uh, the appropriate um, recognition of George Duggan's, uh, service to the, to the, his country and to the town of Concord. Um, I had the privilege of participating on behalf of the board in the Veterans Day Ceremony at Sleepy Hollow. Um, uh, with the, uh, town, uh, Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. It was a beautiful day. Uh, it was, uh, well attended and it was a very, uh, moving and appropriate ceremony. Um, with the participation of the, both the Concord Minutemen, the Independent Battery, um, the Girl Scouts, the, um, um, Donors of the American Revolution. All kinds of patriotic and civic groups, uh, and, um, it was, is, was, was a wonderful event. Uh, they, the flag burning ceremony was, was handled, uh, very efficiently. And it was something that I hope that, um, that more, more people find the opportunity to participate, participate in the, in the future. Um, uh, also, the, um, the big news from the library is that we have a new library director. Um, and I don't know whether, there was a public announcement that went out. Uh, the woman's name is Emily Smith, and she was, among other things, for eight years, uh, Assistant Librarian in the town of Lexington. And I look forward, as I hope all you do, uh, to, to meeting her in the near future. I hope that they have some kind of a reception for her, uh, for members of the public to meet her. And that's the big news for me. Other things are things that I've all passed through on the, when the subjects came up in the meeting today.
I, I neglected one update. It's probably my most important update, which is I got a note from Anna McCune, um, saying that the, uh, critical shortage of, uh, people on the personnel board that is preventing them from making quorum and, uh, having their meetings is having an impact on the Recreation Department. Uh, because they're not able to approve compensation schedules and, uh, personnel-related classifications. And they have, uh, new, uh, pay scales and, uh, incentive pay program for their personal training staff that they'd like to unveil, but they're, they're currently held back, uh, by this situation. So, uh, just wanted to highlight this, uh, critical opening and see if there's anything that we can do to get it filled.
Well, one thing I could suggest is that we have, um, the, uh, the Study Committee, uh, that we have formed. And, um, maybe, um, even though their, uh, their objectives are more long-term and institutional, they might, um, they might be willing to come up with a, a short-term solution to that problem and to be able to recruit some people to serve on the Personnel Board, uh, so that at least it can meet, uh, can, uh, have a quorum to, to act.
Yeah, it seems, uh, pretty ironic that we've got the Study Committee meeting twice and we can't get the Personnel Board to meet.
Oh, life is full of ironies.
Is it?
Yeah, the, um, full complement on the Personnel Board is five members and they've been running with three for quite some time, which means they all have to be available for a meeting.
So they're not listed on the chart that's on our, um, agenda?
They were the last time and they should have been.
So, Cass, thank you.
Yeah, I asked, uh, I asked Jeremy to add them last time and they were on, so I'm not sure how they fell off this time. But they should be on there.
Well, uh, let me ask Stephen, um, for this type of update, and I also have a few others, like APP 10, um, for follow-up items from our meeting. Do we work with Chris Carmody? Or?
It depends on what it is. I think you just let me know what you need and we can, um, figure out who, who best will sign it. The Personnel Board is meeting, or they're, they're scheduled to meet on November 30th, whatever that's worth. But Matt is right. They, it, it's not just recreation. There's a whole bunch of important changes that need to be made. Um, which is one of the reasons why the bylaw proposal was made. two years ago now, I think, was to, so we wouldn't be stuck in these situations. But it is important in trying to recruit members to get that full complement.
Okay, so for future agendas, whoever is typing the agenda, please add Personnel Board to that list. And all the citizens listening, please consider applying to be on the Personnel Board with the volunteer card. Okay, and Henry? Henry? I don't think he hears me. Henry, do you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I was just, a follow-up from your liaison report. If you hear, there is a welcoming event for our new library director, Emily Smith. Please let us know.
We'll coordinate that.
Thank you, Stephen. Great, great. Okay, I also have a liaison report. I'll try to be brief. There's been a lot going on. The Hugh Cargo Trust and the Tax Relief Committee have joined up together to do their annual appeal. So watch for a letter in the mail. They're canvassing the whole town. The MMA Fiscal Policy Committee reported that the state ended the year, last year, with the surplus of $4 billion, which is really a huge number. And their priorities are to refill the State Stabilization Fund, police training, housing insecurity and human services, CPA Trust Fund, and Chapter 90 for roadwork. I attended by conference call the closing arguments of the Estabrook Woods litigation. I heard most of it on the phone. It was a little bit difficult technology-wise. But next step now, the judge will be issuing his ruling over the next few months. I attended the REC meeting, the Regional Emergency Communication Center. And they had an excellent site visit to another REC in southeast Mass that has seven dispatchers and almost 100,000 people in the area. It's a very successful site and a good model. We've had three responses for Project Manager. And also going to be out for Executive Director, which is also funded in this year's budget. The School Committee met a few times since we last talked. They have received $1.1 million in ARPA funds. And they are sending a survey to parents and stakeholders, asking what should they spend this money on? For example, summer school, helping students of color, special needs counselors, reading specialists, et cetera. Okay, also, they have very high vaccination rates and low numbers of cases at the school. That's great news. I've been involved in several important meetings preparing for the public hearing on December 16th for this Special Town Meeting for the middle school, including a November 4th Finance Committee meeting that, where they discussed the brainstorming session we had and the possible financial offsets to the school. And they also had an excellent meeting of capital planning. This, as you know, is number two of three. And the Select Board will be doing number three of three at our next meeting, December 6th, in a joint meeting with the School Committee. And finally, at the Chair's Breakfast, Bill Kamaz of the Tax Fairness Committee was looking for new members. But he also said that they could soon be possibly finished with their work. If we were looking for a committee that might be nearing its end, the Tax Fairness Committee might be getting there, depending on how the legislation turns out. That's it for my report. And at this time, we are ready for public comment.
Well, I have a public comment.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Right. My name is Dinos Gonatas. I'm at 260 Old Marlboro Road, obviously in Concord. And my public comment is about the Estabrook Woods litigation. And if, and a few aspects of background, I do go in the Estabrook Woods from time to time. And I particularly like biking there and cross-country skiing there. One of my acquaintances is an avid dog walker and is adamant that dogs should be allowed to go there without a leash. And other acquaintances, one of the defendants, who's just as adamant that dogs should be leashed. And in fact, he and his family members have been bitten by dogs. And my personal view is, as a cross-country skier, I don't, I don't like encountering yellow snow. And especially don't like encountering other dog waste that owners don't pick up. So I'm sort of ambivalent on the issue there, although I'm personally grateful for the public access that I have. You know, I try and understand both sides here and can certainly understand how if they're overwhelmed with dog traffic, it's a problem for the owners. But the thing that I'm really puzzled by, and I should say, as somebody who's managed patent litigation in my career and done a lot of risk analysis, the thing I'm really puzzled by is how so much money could have been spent on this litigation, not only by the town. And I believe the town has probably spent close to $2 million. The defendants, if you add up their legal expenses, we're talking over $10 million here of legal expenses. And it's not anything that you can point to as a positive result. It's really been a lose-lose situation. And I guess my first question is, how did we come to authorize this amount of litigation in the absence of settlement discussions? And what sort of oversight has there been so that there's a chance for accountability and responsible questions and answers so that we know that we're spending money responsibly? I guess that's my first question. That's a question, if you want to answer it.
Okay, that is a long and complicated question that we have discussed many times. And we're not really set up on our agenda to have a discussion of that tonight. Um, it is an excellent question, and if you would please give your contact information to Mr. Crane, I will get in touch with you offline, and we can talk about that.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. A further comment is, I have read the briefs, not in detail, but I've skimmed them. And it would say the defendant's briefs, they have crisp summaries of the argument that are to the point and relatively succinct despite the complexities of the issues. The town's brief have our sort of meanders all over the place. And this is, and again, it's hard to anticipate the outcome from a court, especially at the trial level. And then, of course, there'll be an appeal, whoever loses, I have no doubt, if there's no settlement. But this is not a case where the town has a 50% chance or more prevailing. And typically, in the situations I've dealt with, if you don't have a strong case, you typically try and settle. I mean, if the defendant, if the other side has a weak case and they pursue, then you've got no incentive to settle. But if it's 50-50, why spend all the money instead of having a settlement discussion? I mean, it makes much more sense to come to an agreement instead of wasting more money. And my personal view is, I don't really care who owns the land. I mean, I'm grateful that I can get to go cross-country skiing in this place from time to time. I don't know the owner well enough that I would get invited in there necessarily. You know, as a personal favor, maybe once or twice, but, but from what I understand, from having talked to Chris Whelan about this a couple of years ago, the town is just adamant that it's its own road. And regardless of the settlement that offered the town and its residents as a matter of permission, the use of the path. Chris said that the town was just adamant that they would prove this as a sort of a matter of pride practically. And frankly, I think this is a very risky strategy because instead of having a settlement where the townspeople could use the land as a matter of permission, now you're rolling the dice. Not only have you spent all this money, but you've rolled the dice and have a chance of, a significant chance of not having access to the land. So I honestly don't know what that accomplishes. And quite frankly, doesn't look like a very well thought out strategy. You have defendants with clearly competent legal counsel and have strong arguments. To go this far is one of the craziest things I've ever seen, honestly, in terms of a business decision. And I don't know what background the board has in making these types of decisions or what kind of risk assessment was performed when this was went into, or whether or not the legal counsel that you have are qualified. Because I can tell you just from reading the briefs that their briefs were not as concise and were not as logical or as well thought out as the defense briefs. And maybe it's because their arguments weren't strong, but it could also be that maybe they just weren't the best legal counsel. And I don't know what you did about shopping for all these things, but clearly a better solution could have been obtained. And it could have been obtained a long time ago. And I guess my, my comment is, even at this stage, it would be good to find a solution that's a negotiated solution as opposed to just waiting for the roll of the dice from courts.
I have, I have a simple response to that, is I've been thinking for a long time about the town having a Citizen Legal Services Committee to review situations like this. And I think that this gentleman ought to be a leading candidate for that committee.
Okay, that's an idea. And thank you very much for your comments. A lot of good points there, and we can talk further offline. Are there any additional public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, I think we are ready to adjourn to executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second, I don't think I have a link to the executive.
I don't either.
I did find it. It is in an email from, let me forward it to you guys. I think it's an email from Jeremy. I did find it today.
I have it. I have it ready here. I'll send it.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Ackerman.
Well, I think we need to also clarify that this executive session, this is not Estabrook Road. This is a different matter.
I mean, yeah, I don't think that we're intending to purchase, exchange, lease, or determine the value of Estabrook Road.
Okay, all right. Hi.
Ms. Bates?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, hi.
Okay, we are adjourned to a new session, not to return to open session. Everyone, happy Thanksgiving.